Meeting, oh, good morning. Uh, today's Tuesday, March 9th. This is the Audit Committee meeting. We have a quorum, and I'd like to start with a, with an invocation, please, if you'll bow your head with me. Lord, thank you so much for this beautiful day, and, and spring is upon us, and, and we're enjoying the sunshine. Thank you for the blessings we have, including the right to assemble and to govern ourselves. Um, help us as we make decisions today that affect our, our neighbors and our county and our community. Help us to, um, make these hard decisions with, uh, truth and fairness in mind. In your name we pray, amen. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, republic, for which it is a just, for all.
Again, having a full quorum with five members present, um, may I have, um, a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, gentlemen?
Don't move.
Thank you. Is there any, uh, changes to our agenda this morning?
Not to my knowledge, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. The agenda for the Audit Committee meeting stands as, as published. Um, the, let's see, let's go straight into our presentation. Our folks from Sheraton Maddox Evans CPAs, come on up, Mr. Johnson, talk to us about what you found out. I read the report, and it sounds like everybody's been doing a very good job.
Yes, I think we have, uh, mostly good news to report today, so, um, uh, that's always a good thing. Thank you and good morning. Um, we're gonna, gonna start with the Emergency Management, uh, Agency. Uh, that is one of the, the first report you should find in your, your packet there. Uh, Emergency Management Agency is responsible for obtaining, renewing, and maintaining clients of grants from the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Department of Homeland Security and, and others. Uh, the county has to, uh, remain compliant in order to receive reimbursements for expenses and remain eligible for subsequent granting periods. So, for this, we obtained, uh, grant documents for all the grants that were in effect, for fiscal year, um, ending June, uh, June 30, 2020, plus, uh, this fiscal year to date. We reviewed all the grant documents, uh, and supporting documentation noting proper authorization. Uh, we found no exceptions in any of our review of those, um, grant requirements or grant, uh, processes. So, the controls, uh, appear to be, uh, functioning properly in that area, that important area. We also looked at time sheets, like we do in every, every department, and we found no, uh, exceptions in time sheet testing. Uh, we obtained purchase requisitions for all the expenditures, um, a listing of all the expenditures for, again, uh, fiscal year ending June 30, 2020 through, through the present. We selected, uh, various expenditures, examined the supporting documentation, and had no exceptions there. We looked at purchase card transactions without exception, and then we moved on to inventory. So, the Emergency Management Agency does maintain an inventory of communications equipment and assorted other emergency-related, emergency preparedness supplies. We obtained, uh, listings of these inventory items. We selected several, uh, items from the listing and found them in physical inventory. Selected several items from the physical inventory and found them on the listing, and noted no exceptions in that area. That is the, concludes the report of the Risk Management Department. Are there any questions?
That was the Emergency Management?
Yes, ma'am.
Going into risk.
Management.
Do you have any questions?
No.
All right, next.
Next is Risk Management. When, uh, when the county, uh, Columbia County property is damaged by a third party, this is most often a vehicle collision, but there could be other scenarios. And Columbia County incurs expense to repair that item. The Risk, Risk Management Department seeks to recover those costs. So, they do so by preparing what's called a subrogation package, including supporting documentation, and then they, um, will file that with the third-party payer, which most often is the insurance company of the at-fault driver, uh, most often scenario, I believe. We selected several reimbursements, um, over the, uh, previous fiscal year and this fiscal year to date. We, uh, examined that supporting documentation, and ultimately traced the cash receipts back to being received, uh, by the Finance Department. They found no, uh, exceptions in any of that testing. We also tested purchase requisitions without exception, and purchase cards and time sheets also without exception. Um, then we reviewed insurance policies. So, the Risk Management Department is responsible for the annually renewing all the insurance policies for the county. Um, we obtained all the insurance policies. We reviewed all of the declarations pages, and everything appeared to be in order. We noted no exceptions in our review of those insurance policies. Risk Management also provides, uh, intensive driving training and also driver's license checks, um, for employees who have, uh, county vehicles or, uh, vehicle allowances. We obtained a list from the Risk Management Department of all the, the current county employees who are authorized to drive county vehicles. Selected several and reviewed that, uh, current driving record was processed and on file, and we noted no exceptions. So, that is the Risk Management Department.
Excellent. Are there any questions? Thank you, next.
So, next we have, uh, Savannah River Rapids Pavilion. This department previously referred to as rental facilities has been somewhat reconfigured. Um, the primary thing is that the, um, yeah, Exhibition Center is what we call it, has been removed from that department to become sort of its own department. Um, so, uh, we focused on the Savannah Rapids Pavilion operation. We looked at client files, so this is when someone rents the, uh, the venue there at, uh, what we refer to as SRP, uh, the Savannah Rapids Pavilion. When the ve- when the venue is, is rented there, uh, before, it can be reserved. Uh, half of the rental fee has to be paid upfront. Um, those, those payments are accepted by cash, check, credit card. Once that's accepted, the reservation is considered complete, and the confirmation number is printed on an invoice. We selected 24 such files, um, checked to make sure that the deposit was paid upfront. Checked to make sure that those files were complete and that all the, uh, various rules were followed, whether there's going to be alcohol, there's to be a deputy, all of those types of things. Then we, um, for this, we selected two dozen files to do this. For the same two dozen files, we also looked ultimately at the rental collection, and we traced the collection of those funds, um, back to remittance to the Finance Department without exception. So, um, we checked to make sure that the, uh, amounts collected were traced back to a batch report. That batch report agreed to the deposit slip, types of, um, of testing that we normally do. And so, for two dozen files, we found no exceptions in the process. We also looked at purchase card transactions. Um, we did notice that one, uh, piece of sound equipment was coded as concessions expense. This is a misclassification, um, simply report that to you. Um, we looked at purchase requisitions without any issues at all, and we also looked at time sheets without any, uh, exceptions. And testing vendor testing, this is, um, when a vendor pays some commission, so you think of the kayak rentals, uh, the, the bike peddler, those, those, uh, other vendors you have down there. They typically remit a percentage of their collections. And so, we analyzed all of those. We collected the, um, QuickBooks files or the, the, um, revenue reports from the vendors, recalculated their remittances, and we did notice that Silver Palm remitted a little bit too much. So, the, the contract they have with the county is to remit 10.25% of gross sales. They remitted 10.5%, and so, the excess revenue to the county was $61.
Did we give them back the money?
No.
Explain, please.
We should, I mean.
We did, yeah.
Three years ago, we noticed the same thing, and this, this, this year, we, um, we selected, I think, two of these remittances from Silver Palms. One was calculated correctly, one was calculated incorrectly. It is, uh, the responsibility of Silver Palms to calculate 10.25% of their revenues and remit them.
Yeah, I'm not asking you. We'll make it up to them. Thank you, appreciate that, Scott.
All right. So, that's, uh, any, any other, uh, questions about, uh, the Savannah River Rapids Pavilion?
The item that was, uh, misclassified, like, it was some kind of equipment, but it must not have been a huge purchase. It wasn't some kind of huge capital purchase that...
You know, I did not in my notes note the dollar amount. I don't recall it being, uh, anything that would cause a material misstatement in the financial statements. Uh, we simply checked for classification and, um...
There had to be a typo from the...
Could be a typo. That was in the purchase card process, I believe. So, in the purchase cards, there's, uh, there's a, uh, process which is documented in each one of the reports where those, uh, purchases are sort of downloaded in a batch, and then someone goes through and, and identifies each one, and perhaps session and, um, electrical or sound equipment have similar account numbers perhaps, or similar account names. It, it, uh, we just, we just made a note of it.
Like everything, it's the same class.
But, yeah.
Oh, instead of authority.
Okay, that sounds right. Uh, something like that, uh, would be the reason for that. I don't, again, I don't believe it was a material misstatement, uh, that would be reflected in, causing issues in the financial statements. We just noticed it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Moving on.
Okay. So, our last, um, department is the, uh, Community Events Department. This is the department that, that rents out the Lady A or, uh, Evans Town Center Park items. We looked at vendor applications, so this is, um, vendors selling items at an event at, let's say, Evans Town Center. So, for, uh, this, we selected several events, and we, uh, we looked at the vendors, uh, some of which pay a flat fee. Sometimes they pay a flat fee plus 10% of their sales. Uh, we obtained the general ledger, selected several vendor revenues from the past fiscal year and this fiscal year to date. We traced the deposit to the Revenue Transmittal Form and traced it back to being deposited, and we know there are no exceptions in any of those, uh, vendor, um, revenues. We also looked at corporate sponsorships. So, the, um, once a, um, a company has decided to sponsor, uh, they'll, they receive a contract. Once they've signed that contract and that, uh, amount has been received from them, we reviewed the contracts for several, uh, vendors, traced that money back to being deposited without any exception there. Um, all the, all the contracts were on file, and all the dollar amounts, uh, appeared to add up, so, no issues with the corporate sponsorships. But it comes to the facility rentals, um, we also obtained the general ledger and selected several deposits for facility rentals out of the two fiscal years of, of mentioned previously, FY 2020, this year to date. We looked at the deposit amount and the rental contract, agreed those dollar amounts, and traced that back to deposit in the, uh, bank account. We also looked at ticket sales. So, previously, facility rentals, as well as mentioning just a moment ago, but sometimes, um, citizens have to purchase tickets to attend a, um, event. Not all of them include ticket sales, but when there are ticket sales, we selected several of those events from, uh, from the general ledger. We, uh, traced the deposit of those ticket proceeds back to the Revenue Transmittal Form and to being deposited, and noted no exceptions there as well. We also looked at purchase requisitions without exception, purchase cards, time sheets, and we did a petty cash count and noted no, uh, differences in petty cash. Any questions on community events?
I do have a question for Mr. ... Uh, and it's on the payroll thing, 'cause I know last year we didn't have... Those guys work, I mean, they work all the time. Every time you were at the park, you saw them, so, they get comp time, do they get overtime? How, how does that work? Regular staff that run the events, they're salaried folks. Are making minimum wage, aren't they? I mean, they're, they're out there all the time. They really, they really doing a great job and a lot of time. No, well, I, I am happy him being treated fairly. Whatever, if it's overtime, or it's comp time, or whatever works for them, but they need to do... Because when they're out there Saturday, Friday nights, and Saturdays and Sundays on three days. And I don't know what they did all week. They may have been off all week, but when I was at the vent, I saw them. That's making sure they're taken care of.
Questions or comments?
Comments. Types of audits are what we've come to expect in Columbia County, and so, Scott and Matt and Glenn and Eames, we just want to tell you how much we appreciate it. Very refreshing to see no exceptions quarter after quarter. Seldomly do we have issues, so, everything rises and falls on leadership, and we appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. We do have a great team.
So, I, um, I do have an update on some of the things that we have been, uh, working on. We do have, um, for, for the next presentation, we will be bringing you some results of the lodging tax, uh, which we periodically, um, bring results from that periodically. We have some that we have already performed a great deal of analysis on. We're working on, uh, on the reporting and the review of those, those results, so we can bring that to you next time. So, you will see some hotel motel tax, uh, or lodging tax results next time you see me.
How is the cooperation going with our employers?
Mostly good.
Mostly good?
There's usually a procrastinator in the bunch, um, uh, and so, we almost, we're going to present one this, um, at this meeting, but we had a procrastinator, and we thought if we held it, we could probably get that person's participation, because we had partial information, so, going pretty well.
Good.
Pretty well. Plus, I want to do some initial, additional analysis and see if I can add some value in there. But, um, we also have a, um, a meeting scheduled, uh, with Scott and Leanne tomorrow to, um, to plan the next couple of quarters and, and determine, uh, what our priorities should be.
And we've been putting off the Board of Elections, because they've been very busy with very legitimate work, so that's going to be on our next, our next report?
I do have a list for you here of, of departments that are due. Board of Elections is due, and yes, we, um, we certainly didn't want to, um, go in there and try to do the, the involved process while they were trying to deal with all of the, the runoff and the, all of that stuff. So, now I think, um, hopefully, they've taken some vacation time, and we can get in there and, um, perform an internal audit of the Board of Elections. Uh, also, the Planning Department, um, Water Utility, Code Compliance, and Building Inspections. These are, um, departments we haven't gotten to in the last, uh, three years. Uh, just, just a, um, a note, Code Compliance and Building Inspections, if not, uh, so, and Planning, some of these were previously under a larger internal audit report, and one of our initiatives over the last few years has been to break up some of those into smaller chunks. So, um, while, um, Development Division, Development, I believe, contains some of these departments, we're gonna try to look at them as individuals, um, it's a, that's just a note there. So, when I say we haven't done the planning in three years, three years ago, it was Development Division.
This works out well also with retirement of Mr. Clayton, uh, having a, an audit to finish out one Division Director's tenure and to start a new Division Director with a clean audit. But it'll, it'll work out well timing-wise.
I think that's, uh, that is going to be a good, uh, timing for that. So, in, in, uh, unless there are any questions, sort of in closing, I would like to open it up to the committee if there are any, uh, broader questions or any areas of concern that you would like for us to consider. Let me know.
I don't have any. All right, there ain't none. Do we, um, do we have any, any public comment or participation? There ain't none. Um, we're going to adjourn this meeting and come back for our next committee in two minutes. Thank you. It's 8:52 on Tuesday, March 9th, and this is the Management and Internal Services Committee meeting. We have three members present, and we have a quorum. We have already prayed and pledged. I'd like to move directly into the, the, uh, the heart of the meeting. May I have a, um, motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting? Thank you. Um, and our agenda, is, is there any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Um, do not have any presentations or any items on the consent agenda. I'd want to move directly into debate. Uh, Mr. Johnson, tell me about, um, our new business today.
Uh, the first item we have for your consideration is an agreement to, uh, actually lower the basis points to our ICMA RC agreement. This is the agreement that we have with ICMA, uh, to oversee our 401A and 457B plans. This is actually going to reduce the basis points from, uh, 0.24% to 0.15%. Uh, and you can see the approximate savings there is 125,000 for the first year, or 375,000 over the three-year term. That'll be money that'll actually be realized by the participants in the retirement fund. So, staff recommends entering to the three-year agreement with ICMA RC, uh, also lowering the basis points, uh, as described.
And for clarification, when you say basis point, she means the fees?
These are fees.
That they are charging?
These are the, these are the fees that they're charging to administrate our plan. And kudos again to Ms. McBurney and the folks in our HR department for continuing to, to, uh, stay on top of these things as we renegotiate, and, and lots of times when you renegotiate, things go up. But we seem to renegotiate and things go down, so that's good.
Very good, right.
Do, do we normally get in three-year agreements with these folks? Is this a renewal that...
Yeah, I, I believe in the past, I think last time we did a three-year agreement, last couple of times, I believe, we've done three-year agreements with them, so it's actually a, a pretty good, pretty good agreement. And, and really, for, for the amount that they're charging to administrate this, it's, uh, I don't know that we could find a much better deal.
Move to consent.
Second.
So, moved, next.
The first item I have for your consideration is Resolution Number 21-07. This would establish participation in another cooperative purchasing agreement. You know, we have several of them currently that would participate in. This one is the Houston or Houston-Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program. This is an interlocal contract that gives us access to contracts that they have bid and negotiated, uh, through their government agencies, and this, these services are available to governments in all 50 U.S. states. Currently, 70 Georgia cities and counties are members of the cooperative. So, we would like to participate as well by passing this resolution and, um, authorizing the chairman to execute the interlocal contract for cooperative purchasing.
Is there a yearly fee for this?
No, there's no fee. And when we do utilize one of their contracts, we actually issue our own purchase orders, and we purchase directly from the contractor. You know, we don't go through, we don't pay this, this program. We, we deal with the actual contract.
Move to consent.
Second.
So, moved, next.
The next item is fiscal year 2022 VHS Coordinated Transportation Contract. This is with the Regional Commission. This is for our public transit services. The current award has not actually been announced, because we currently have these services on hold. This is where we transport the seniors, um, to the, to the actual center, and we're not doing that currently right now because of COVID, but this, the Regional Commission does desire to keep a contract in place for when services resume. So, we are recommending approval of this contract for next fiscal year with authorization for the chairman to sign the contract.
Are there any changes?
No, no changes.
Move to consent.
Second.
So, moved, but I do have a question. Um, so, the contract, is it per mile, per...
It's per trip, I believe.
Okay, so when we had COVID and there were no trips?
Per trip.
Pay. Okay. So, while COVID was going on, there was nothing?
Nothing.
It cost us. Thank you, um, next.
The next item is a bid for walker mowers. We did receive two responses for this bid. While master mower from Marietta, Georgia is the apparent low bidder by $58, staff is recommending that we actually purchase the mowers from Harry's Equipment, Equipment Center in Martinez, Georgia, mainly due to the fact that warranty work has to be done at the facility, and we, you know, don't want to have to take it to Marietta. We'd rather stay local, and it is only 58 more dollars.
And we do want to spend money locally any chance we get.
The staff recommends awarding it to Harry's Equipment Center.
Matt, are, are these placements, are these new, is it...
These are replacements. No, that's right, these are for the new, the new crew.
New crew.
That's right, the new, new mowing crew, I'm sorry.
Move to consent.
Second.
The final item I have for you is the purchase of vehicles for fire services. We, uh, they are needing two half-ton trucks and two SUVs, which we are going with Dodge Durangos. The, uh, lowest quote we received with, was, was from Thompson Chrysler Dodge. The staff is recommending that we purchase the two Ram 1500s and the two Dodge Durangos from Thompson Motor Center. And you see the cost there, they're actually under budget.
Why do we need these?
Part of it's for their new training. They, they hired four new training officers, I believe.
If you remember last year, in the budget, we, we went ahead and moved forward with new training, uh, division, and we added people to that. We have not gotten the vehicles for those people yet, so two of these are new, two of these are replacement. These two Dodge Durangos are going to be replacing two very old vehicles that we've had a couple of our folks in Fire, uh, Fire Administration driving for some time. One's an old Crown Vic, and what's the other one? An old Ford Taurus, I mean, so it's, they're, they're old.
Still running good, though?
Uh, yeah, they are, uh, so, uh, because, because of our great fleet department, they keep them maintained and, and they're running, so, uh, we, we either repurpose those, but most likely with those two, we, we will surplus.
Right, and I, I try to avoid breaking out in hives every time we buy equipment.
I understand.
Motion?
Move to consent.
All right.
Second.
Moved, is there anything else, Ms. Reese?
That was it.
Mr. Blanchard?
Uh, the first item I have for you this morning is for the replacement, or the lifecycle replacement of information technology equipment.
Ooh.
Here we go.
I knew that was coming.
Chairman Duncan, you might want to take a break.
Come on, Michael, give me...
Of, of course, the IT department is responsible for the inventory of all of our computer equipment. So, uh, every time that a piece of equipment is brought in the organization, it's under warranty, and, and we do like a, a three-year PC replacement with all of ours. What you see here, this, uh, 259,848.29, which is in IT's approved AP budget for this year, is the replacement of, um, about 300 pieces of technology. Um, there's PCs, there's monitors, there's laptops, uh, tablets, uh, and various miscellaneous pieces of equipment to go with them. So, uh, this is all being purchased under an existing agreement that the commission approved with, uh, Dell Computer, uh, a couple of years ago. And, uh, staff recommends approval.
What do you do with the equipment that comes off service? Do you recycle it, do you have to pay to have it?
Most of it is surplus through GovDeals.com.
It, obviously, it takes time for us to wipe it and...
Yes. Oh, that always happens, before anything is, is given out, it's completely... Oh, that always happens. Before anything is, is given out, it's completely wiped.
And is the labor to do that included?
I believe we do most of that in-house.
Probably not.
But this is just the equipment?
Just the purchase of the hardware from Dell Computer.
And this is part of a bigger program. As you see, this is life cycling. So we found ourselves in a situation many years ago where we had a lot of old equipment at one time and it all came due at the same time. And it was very difficult to afford doing that. So we've gotten on this cycle of replacing it after the warranty expires and going through the life cycle. It's been much better. Now we have more up-to-date equipment and we're not finding ourselves stuck when it, when it, you know, having a lot of old stuff that's going bad at one time. So it's just part of the overall strategy.
Move to consent. Second.
So moved. Next.
The next item I have for you is our subscription for the enterprise agreement with ESRI for 2021 to 2024. The commission approved our first enterprise agreement in 2018, so it's been three years. The original three-year subscription is expiring. Per ESRI, our existing master agreement is still valid. So all we really need is approval to move on to the next, next subscription. The cost of this is a hundred and ten thousand per year for the enterprise licenses and additional ninety-eight hundred per year for some supplemental programs. So an example of a supplemental program would be our drone-to-map software that enables us to send out our drones. They can fly an area and then convert that into a, a map that we can then share with staff. So it's, it's proven to be a worthwhile endeavor for the last three years, agreement and these ancillary programs. This is budgeted as part of G.I.S. Department's operating budget for this year. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent. Second.
So moved. I have a question. When you do that, the, you have the drone and you make the maps and it's for another department, then do you charge the other department to help offset your cost?
That's correct. G.I.S. is an internal services fund, so they track every task that they perform so that it can be allocated back to the department that requested the new work.
We did that last year. Prior, pre, prior to that, it was, uh, they were just part of the general fund and we realized that they were doing a lot of work for a lot of different departments. So if you remember last year, one of the, one of our balancing acts for our budget was to actually pull G.I.S. out and make them an internal services fund.
Do we have any legal matters today? Um, let's go into staff reports. Mr. County Manager, tell me about personnel savings today.
Well, here we go again. I mean, you can see that the personnel savings, you know, for, for the year are pretty high. Seven-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars total, much past our, our budget goal. Most of that has to do with, with, uh, you know, the amount of folks or positions that were open and trying to get people to fill those. We are currently in the process right now of going through the budget and as we're going through all the positions, we're looking at positions that have been open for a long time, positions that have been difficult to fill, trying to figure out ways to do that if they need to be filled. If not, then we need to sideline those positions and try to figure out a way to continue to get the job done. But this, just for your information, also included the turnover rate, which is pretty consistent with what we've been seeing.
Mr. Johnson, when we talk about our employee-to-citizen ratio, and which is very, very good compared to our, our sister counties, do we go by the number of positions we have employees we should have or the number we actually?
Typically, when we calculate that, we, we do it by the, the number that we actually have. When I'm calculating that, by the number of people we actually have working right now. It's, it's not a great difference when you start doing the math on if we had sixty open positions into a hundred and sixty thousand. It's not gonna move the decimal very much, but, but still, we, uh, we, we have calculated it both ways. But either way, we're probably one of the best in the state. Certainly amongst our benchmark counties, we're the best.
We have twelve-hundred, thirteen?
Almost thirteen-hundred employees now.
Internal Services report.
The first report for your review is the year-to-date budget report. This is for the month ended February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. We should be performing around sixty-seven percent as is customary. I have listed some of the main funds on the rec sheet for your review and everyone is operating within their budgets as they should be. No surprises.
Thank you. Moving on.
The next item is the sales tax update. We have received funding through the month of January. That amount was just over two-point-two million dollars and our annualized percentage increase is fifteen-point-nine-three percent.
That's excluding the one-time hit?
It is.
That's correct.
If I actually finish out the, another trillion dollars of COVID waste, then it'll probably stay real high. One-point-nine trillion. Right?
Investment report?
Yes, the final report is the investment report showing our currently, our current investments of excess funds within, within each of our accounting funds.
Any comments or questions, gentlemen? None. Are there any public comments or participation? I have no items for executive session and if there's no other, um, no other business for this committee, we stand adjourned. How much, how much time do you need? About five minutes. Thank you.
Nine-ten in time to start the Propose Development and Planning Services Committee. We've already had the invocation and the pledge. Three members present. Two minutes are attached to the last meeting. entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Uh, we do on the agenda, we have an item to bring back, which would be I two A.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, there's no presentations. We'll go straight to the debate agenda. First item is the alcohol beverage license.
The first item I have for your consideration is alcohol beverage license for Local Augusta LLC doing business as local. An applicant has, um, has submitted application for an alcohol beverage license to sell beer and wine for on-premise consumption at thirty-eight fifty-one Evans Stillos Road, Suite one oh nine. They have provided all the proper information and the, the site has been posted. Staff recommends approval of license at the March thirtieth BOC meeting.
Move to consent.
Yeah, ma'am.
Second.
And the second item we have consideration is alcohol beverage license for Frey Enterprise LLC doing business. Bulge, Bull, Creamery, and Roll On Inn.
Love it.
We're gonna need to do a site visit.
Yes, absolutely. Road trip.
The applicant has provided a, have applied for an alcohol beverage license to have bill wine and distill, distill spirits on-premise consumption from seventy twenty-five Evans Towns on the Boulevard, Suite two thirteen. They have provided all the proper information, have provided, uh, have posted the site and staff recommends approval at the, on March thirtieth BOC meeting.
Move to consent.
Second.
Uh, next, we have the item on the agenda that we added about the bid for the nuisance property.
All right, the third item for your consideration is the, the bid number twenty-one zero zero one dash bid fifteen twelve. The nuisance property, you all did see this last month and approved for the award to the low bidder. When procurement went to the low bidder to get them to sign the contract, they were unwilling to provide the increased insurance requirements. Therefore, staff is recommending, uh, we're awarding, awarding the contract to the second low bid, which is Thompson Wrecking here, local, uh, for twenty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Staff recommends, uh, BOC entering and awarding a contract to Thompson Wrecking in the amount of twenty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Consent?
Second.
Uh, next, we'll, are there any legal matters? Next, we'll go to the staff reports, planning services.
Attached for your review is the February twenty-one Planning Department workload measurement monthly report. Answer any questions you might have.
No questions.
Questions?
Also included is the January twenty-one Plan Review Workload Measurement monthly report for your information. Questions you might have about that?
Question?
An overall question. How do you see residential, of course, whenever I'm out in public, all I hear is, we need more lots. And I said, well, you need more builders then.
Yeah, we, we've, we've heard the same thing most recently at the, uh, comprehensive plan, um, public hearing that we just held last Thursday night. Development community seems to be under the impression that we're throttling back on the number of permits that we're issuing and we've indicated that's clearly not the case. Included in the report, I thought it was worth mentioning that just in last month, we've approved forty-one additional lots. So while that's not a lot, there, you know, certainly we'll accept any final plats they wanna submit to us. My opinion, I think we will see continued interest and continued development. We have a number of developments that are in various stages of completing their final infrastructure improvements, but we should see an additional number of lots continue. How far into the future that holds, that's one's guess.
Yeah, part of the problem is cost of build too. So while there may be some lots on the ground and we, we do need to work towards that, or we are working towards that as the market drives that. We were talking to a local builder yesterday. He was saying that a, a sheet of OSB plywood last year was seven dollars a sheet. Right now it's forty dollars a sheet if you can find it.
Yep.
So the, the cost, if, if somebody did a pre-sale for a house, the builder can't deliver that house for the cost that they quoted right now. So we're seeing a lot of people delayed waiting on the prices to come down. And I, and I believe we were having a conversation about the, potentially the federal administration getting, getting into the prices of lumber, trying to regulate that because it's just gotten so far out. So our local builders are feeling, feeling the, the pain associated with that.
And I would add too, I think part of the, uh, part of the challenge they're facing is labor. Just because they want to do it doesn't mean that there's the, uh, labor groups able to do that work in a timely manner. And then it's also material issue, material cost issue, availability of it as well.
The builders I've spoken with, I said, ah, sure, we're not your problem. Follow the process and go and.
Came through a very wet winter.
Lot, lot of lost days.
Yeah, we did.
On the ground.
Canterbury Farms was signed off on yesterday, I believe. How many lots was that?
I've got two, I've got two that are sitting on my desk as we speak. They were passing me on the way to the meeting, so we should have a couple more. Forty, we had forty-one in the last month, so, but I expect we'll have, uh, one hundred and some odd, I mean, week.
And I talked to that developer yesterday and the weather, it just kept him from building. Whispering Pines, the weather kept them from building. It's, it was a tough wet winter.
Lots of lost days. If you're not dried in, it's a loss, there's a lot of lost days out there to be had this winter. Thank you.
Questions? Uh, move on to development services.
All right, the first, uh, first report we have is the February twenty-twenty-one, uh, monthly report and a copy of that is attached. And this somewhat reflects what you, exactly what you all were just talking about. You know, we're, we're behind a little bit in February for the permits, but everything else is up.
Questions? Comments?
All right, and the second one we have is February twenty-twenty-one Development Service Financial Report and a copy of that is attached for your, your information, further action is needed.
Comments?
None.
Hundred-and-seventy-four? What, what?
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. I got ahead of you. Sorry, 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 sorry.
On to the next.
All right, and the last one we have is temporary event alcohol permits. A copy of that reported, there were three of them for the month of February, so that's attached for your information.
Questions? Comments? Uh, moving on, are there any public comments or commissioner comments?
Matt, can you give us an update on the Performing Arts Center?
Yes, sir. We're hoping Friday, um, it, we'll be locked the building down so that we can bring in our, um, acousticians to start programming the sound system. So, uh, our goal right now is to have substantial completion by the end of this month. So I think March thirtieth is when we're hoping to have a CO. Paul O'Leary, no, Paul's guys have been great. They've been over there doing, going above and beyond pressure.
That's super. Yeah, there was an article in the paper about us being open in the fall. My hope is we'd be open before then.
Yes, sir.
The press never gets anything wrong, so.
Never.
All right, uh, we don't have an executive session, so there's no other comments. Let's do it.
Uh-huh. Rock and fire, baby. Let's go.